Welcome to tonight's session of the Saginaw City Council. We'll be led in the prayer and pledge by Councilman John Milne.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to guide us in our deliberations this evening. We ask that you make safe those who have traveled here for our purposes tonight and watch over all of our citizens this evening as we enter the holiday season. We want you to specifically watch over our city employees as they endeavor to keep this city safe for all of us. In their, in his name, amen.
You seem a little short today. We're spread a little thin, but we will make it work. Rules of order. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Roll call, Councilman Milne.
Here.
Councilman Tibbs.
Right.
Councilwoman Bench is pre-excused. Mayor Proton Klock.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Right.
Councilman Bryant is absent. Councilman Balls is absent. Councilman Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning is pre-excused. You have five present or absent.
Thank you. At this time, we would ask the audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or any rude or obnoxious behavior during the course of our meeting. At this time, it would also be a good idea for everyone to turn off or silence all electronic devices. I hope council has done that. I think I've done mine, so hopefully we're okay. Are there any announcements?
For the weeks of the Christmas and New Year's holidays, trash collection will be one day later than your normal pickup day. For example, if your normal collection day is Monday, you should put your materials to the curb on Tuesday. The city also asks that citizens refrain from parking on the street or at the end of driveways during and after heavy snow events to allow crews to clear snow away from the Our next item is personal appearances.
And do we have any today?
Do you want to read the rules?
To read the rules for the personal appearances. As we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to this council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Wes Banning.
Good evening. Wes Banning, 303 South Jefferson Avenue. I'm here again today regarding the home vacancy registry. I had a whole story to spill out today, but then somebody from the city did contact me and say that you guys do have an organization of people working on that for us. You just haven't come to an agreement yet. So I just want to quickly say again why we think it's bad for the city. For one, we understand it was originally started for corporations and people out of this state buying these houses, thinking they were going to profit, make a lot of money, when they realized they weren't. They skipped town, left all these houses blighted. Now, if you drive through our neighborhoods, the only houses now that are blighted are, one, the land bank, but really, there's not much they can do. They're overwhelmed. They do have a lot of properties. We sort of understand that. And the other blighted properties in our neighborhood are slum lords. And we just think it's unfair that they are able to make our city look bad and get a slap on the wrist and pay fifty dollars to rent us to their properties. And people like myself that are trying to make a difference in this city and financially strain ourselves to save these properties are being thrown finances, finances on each other. So what we would hope, and I'm speaking for a lot of people today, but they couldn't be here because of the holidays, essentially you guys are trying to come up with something to deal with that situation. It would be fair if you guys could put that on hold and put it to rest until you guys figure out exactly what you want to do with that registration policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Oberschmidt.
Good evening, City Council. Happy holidays. My name is Mark Oberschmidt. I live at 404 South Granger in the historical district. I'm here tonight to talk about Saginaw quality of life issues. I just have a couple of things I'm going to talk about tonight. There's a lot of them. For me, quality of life is composed of a number of things. Those things I'm going to touch on consist of our city parks, our lack of trees, the River Walk, and how we can better work and support our neighborhood associations. As far as city parks go, I will focus on the park in my neighborhood, which is Otto-Roser Park. Two of the significant issues in the park are the slide that has been broken and boarded off for years, the lack of chips in the playground area. The kids can't touch the ground on the slides, on the swings, excuse me, because we so badly need additional chips. Heritage Square, coupled with the effort of Amanda Kidderman to fund the last load of chips about five years or more ago. We paid half out of our neighbor association account, but we no longer have the funds to do another load of chips. We're looking for help here. Whatever happened to keep Saginaw beautiful? Moving on to trees, we have no forestry division. We are cutting down hundreds of ashes mainly, and plenty of old maples that have gotten too old at this point, with no effort or money to replace them. Please hire a part-time arborist to professionally oversee the planting of new trees and maintain the health of remaining trees. If you go down our city streets, you'll go down blocks where there's no trees between the sidewalk and the curb. Why not offer trees to the neighborhood association this spring? The neighborhood associations play a big part in our crime reduction. Why not ask each neighborhood association its needs? The last thing I'm going to talk about is the River Walk. The River Walk from Ojibwe to downtown is in bad shape, has been for years. Wouldn't it make sense to fix or replace that section of River Walk to enhance all the improvements that have incurred in the downtown area? Being able to ride, or bike, or walk to our soon-to-be new farmer's market would be a nice addition. There are a lot of things that contribute to quality of life in Saginaw. Some could be funded with the $200,000 a year we recently saved by putting in a new, more efficient lighting system. Please don't just dump this money in the general fund to be drawn out by the police or whoever else thinks they need money. Crime is down in the city. Maybe it's time to focus on something else. Among these are other improvements, and I'm just concerned with the quality of life in Saginaw. We constantly drum on how many police we have and the police presence. And like I say, the crime is down, and the neighborhood associations, and my feeling, I've been a member of my neighborhood associations since 1973, have played a big part in that. Why not couple with them a little better than you do and reward them by just offering a few trees and a few simple amenities? Thanks for your time tonight.
Our next speaker is Trevor Mahado.
Good evening, honorable Council, City Council members. My name is Trevor Mahado, and I'm representing my family. And we are on the west side of Saginaw. And I'm also representing part-owner of a home restoration company, which I have a part-investor from down south. We are originally from down south. We're only here for one year, so we're new investors to the city of Saginaw also. And as Wes Banning just pointed out, we just found out that the issue, one of the issues I wanted to speak on today, will be addressed. So that kind of cut half of my talk. But anyway, I would like to reiterate his point also about leaving the registry, the decision registry, for maybe January, when you guys can maybe touch base with us, and we can have a discussion about it. Other than that, the only other topic I had to speak on was the, for lack of a better word, lack of support for new investors, new blood to the city. I'm only here one year, and I've had struggles with being nickel-and-dime to debt with fees from the city. If you own additional properties other than the one that you live with, we're already paying non-homestead taxes on additional properties that we own. And to have to pay an extra rubbish fee for no one living in an unoccupied building, I have no problem registering it, but then there's a fee attached to registering it also. And also, recently, I inquired with the city about grants for, whether for an investor or for customers of mine, when I finish rehabbing a house, if there are grants available for, you know, especially folks with lower income. And I didn't get a favorable answer. The answer that I got was there's one person in the city that handles grants for home purchases or home renovations. And that one person is basically in charge of taking applications. There's no timeline that the applications are taken, and there's no information to the public, whether that's on a website, or a handout, or a flyer, or whatever it is. You would literally have to call the city, speak to this one person, come in and fill out this one form, and that's pretty much a word-of-mouth situation that I've been told by the person in charge of the grants. So that kind of severely hampers most of the population being informed about grants for either renovating or buying homes, especially for low-income folks. The last point was, I think Wes mentioned it, about land bank houses being blighted. One of the first investments I made in the city, apart from our own home that we live in, was a land bank home. And so far, so good. But when I made a second inquiry into purchasing a second property, along with an investor of mine from down south, I got a hard time because we were told there's all kinds of rules and regulations. And when I asked for rules and regulations, there was none, nothing in writing. So considering that these properties, a lot of these land bank properties are with... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Our next item is remarks of council.
I would like to remind council members of the five-minute limit, and I normally would begin with Councilman Bryant, but since he is not here. Councilwoman, would you care to start the...
Good afternoon, well, good evening. I'd like to thank all of our personal appearance, and I'm sure that, no, I'm positive, that the mayor, that, I'm sorry, that our city manager will be getting back with you real soon with some information regarding where we are with those issues that you put in This week was, last week was a slow week. There was a lot happening, but it was more, it was more party time. I had an opportunity to go to several Angel Tree Parties, which is a program that is designed for incarceration children. Their parents actually sign their names up, and community people or churches give gifts. I had an opportunity to attend about five or six of them, and it truly was a rewarding experience. So when you see people, and when you see stuff sometime, you just say, "Well, what is that all about?" So I inquired, and so I found out what it was about. And it's about just making a child happy with a simple toy, with a simple toy, and a simple Merry Christmas. We're going to take a picture of you to send to your dad, because they may not be able to get to their dad. And so I was excited about that. I've got three more to go, too. And do I like it? I love it. I love it. I love to give. I don't have to receive, because it's more fun than giving than it is receiving sometimes. On last Wednesday, I'd like to thank the city manager, his office, and future for helping me with bringing in Michigan Municipal League Executive Director Dan. He came to our city to see what Saginaw was all about. A lot of things that we can't do, I'm not going to say that they gonna do, but we've got some help that might come in and be able to help us just a little bit, along with the DDA and Mr. Miller. He was truly excited. He told me to wish the citizens of Saginaw a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And so he will be back probably in another, before the weather gets warm, because he wants to walk through the city with a team of other people who want to come in to see what Saginaw's all about. When I go to meetings to represent the citizens, all I talk about is Saginaw. All I talk about is y'all. All I talk about is what we doing, how we looking. And so he was truly impressed. So once again, I'd like to thank the people who helped me put that together, and for my compadres that I sit up here with, Merry Christmas. To the citizens and the workers, Merry Christmas, and have a blessed and safe New Year's. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Klock. I'll just be brief with my comments. Mr. Banning, thank you for appearing today. I believe I'm a member of that subcommittee or ad hoc committee, which we looked into the unoccupied property registry. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, but this is what I left with the understanding from the meeting, was that it was, for the most part, inequitable, and we left with the understanding, at least I left with the understanding, that we were going to make some changes to make it more equitable. It does require some changes to the ordinance, and I believe that's where we are with that. But I think some changes to make it more equitable will be coming forth. But thanks for your visit and your comments. Mr. Oberschmidt, thanks again for coming to the City Council. I mean, I understand we always need, there's always something more that can be done, but I think the city is making some efforts, basically through a lot of, I guess, private entities and community groups that are doing a lot for our riverfront. And like, for example, Councilman Bryant and his Ojibwe cleanup, I believe that has extended to include quite a bit of the riverfront. I believe up to the old Armory Building, or Mr. Abraham's Building. And maybe to some dismay, I believe the old parking ramp or the building that has, which been in disrepair for quite a while, that came down. And across the street, you have the Dejan Nash Park, which was done by, I believe, a private entity or a nonprofit group. So could we, could it be faster? Maybe, but are some efforts being made? I believe so, and I believe the longer term is to have some type of walk all the way to the Bay City. At least, that's my understanding. And, you know, is it, could it be faster? Probably, maybe. But I just, from my opinion, I do think there has been efforts being made to beautify the riverfront. But again, thanks for your comment, Mr. Oberschmidt. Mr. Mahado, I apologize for I mispronounced your name. Thanks for your new investment in the city, and I appreciate the input as far as you sharing from other municipalities. It doesn't mean, we do have a way of doing things, and it doesn't make the way we're doing things right. And so I thank you for your feedback, and hopefully, whatever you think I can do to make your transition and your investment easier and quicker, I make myself available. I believe the city appreciates your new investment here, so maybe we're just working our new relationship out. So if you think there's anything I can do to help with that relationship, I'll be, I'll make myself available for that. But to the city and to the tenants here, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas. I wish peace on the city. Been a slight uptick in violence, which is very unfortunate. I sent a prayer to the families of those violence, and whatever can be done to make your season, which should be of peace, more peaceful, I wish that upon you. And I wish the city a more quieter Christmas season, and we start the new year fresh and new. Looking forward to what the city has in store and our residents have in store in 2018. But Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Klock. Just a couple of comments. We had our first real big snow event recently, and I wanted to congratulate the Public Works Department. I received no middle-of-the-night phone calls about I didn't get my street plowed, so I think they've done a great job. Last month, we received a briefing about a bus service that STARS is offering out to Pigeon, Michigan, for employees who live here in Saginaw to get back and forth to work there. I went out and visited Pigeon, where that bus service goes to, and that has been such a success for STARS. They're running two buses for each shift of workers out there. And that means the workers can live here and improve Saginaw. They are earning a very excellent wage out there at Blue Water Steel and Diamond Steel Castings. I want to thank them for partnering with STARS. And then the income tax revenue comes to Saginaw. So it's like we added an employer of 100 people in the city by having them be able to do this. I also am saddened to see the uptick in the shootings and a couple of homicides here in the city. It seems to strike particularly hard at this time of year to have something like that, so I hope we have seen the last of that for this year. I wanted to just mention a little about Mr. Oberschmidt's comments, that quality of life in Saginaw is really the third leg of all the deliberations we have here, our recent work on our mission and vision statement. The first thing is always public safety. The second is that we provide the basic services. And the third is quality of life, and that encompasses a lot of things. And we have a lot of partners for that, in both private industry and other public entities that we work together with to work on the quality of life part. So that is important to us. You take one leg away, it doesn't work, so we have to make all three legs work. And I want to add my voice to a Merry Christmas to all, and a Happy Holidays this season.
Good evening. I might harp on this just a little bit tonight. I did have the opportunity this last week to do a walkthrough of the new, well, I shouldn't say new, the Jane Street Clinic that has a new program. It's the Center for Recovery and Wellness that opened up. It's a program being run in cooperation with the 1016 Network. It is a pretty remarkable place. It is intended to help people who are struggling with addiction, or who are in recovery and still struggling and having a hard time. It is a drop-in center that has all sorts of information available about addiction and recovery, all sorts of support groups, recovery coaching, coffee shop, computer lab, job assistance search. It's a very, very positive development that is seeing an incredible use in its first short two-and-a-half months of existence. The holidays are a difficult time, I believe, for people who struggle with addiction, who continue to face the challenge of recovery. We all read about, hear about, see about the opioid crisis. This group is doing something to address it. So if you are faced with those challenges, certainly wouldn't hurt to check it out. It is in the Jane Street Clinic. It's the Center for Recovery and Wellness. It is, as I said, a vital service run by a remarkable individual. I would urge you to give it a shot if you think you have a problem, or you know you have a problem, and you're trying to do something about it. Above and beyond that, I don't have anything tonight except to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, whatever holiday you might celebrate, even if you don't celebrate a holiday. I hope it's a good time of year for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope that the New Year bring in some exciting things for the city of Saginaw and for everybody that's lived here in our city. I think we have some great things going on in the city of Saginaw. Things are looking brighter, and I'm looking forward to a 2018 myself, Mr. ... So thank you very much. You're welcome.
I'd start with our speakers, Mr. Banning and Mr. Mahado. I want to point out, I do think that we have some things to address, and I think we're working on them, but please understand, we do need these ordinances for the non-owner and unoccupied properties. We have had significant problems in the past that these ordinances have helped redress. So I don't think there's any way they're going to go away, but hopefully, we will look at and try and address some of the concerns you did raise. I can't guarantee you will make you happy, but we'll do the best we can. If you have, please understand, these matters are in front of the staff at this point, and I'm sure there'll be some reply to you as soon as we're able to address those concerns. Mr. Oberschmidt, thank you also for your comments. I'd like to certainly hope that you've seen quality of life improve in the last number of years. Just the huge drop in crime we've had has been significant. But I do want to point out that that has been in great part due to the fact that we have had assistance from the state police, which won't be here forever, meaning that while we have police on hand, they may not be sufficient to cover those, the loss of state police when that happens. So I can't promise you that we cannot continue to put more money into the police department, including the fire department as well. Both of these are public safety agencies for the city, and that's one of our primary, if not the primary, goal of the city, is to provide public safety. But our fire department is hurting as well because of the loss of staff that will happen in the near future, as well as potentially the loss of the fire station. So the funds that are available are stretched thin, no matter how you cut it. So providing, some of the things you're asking for may not be in the cards in the near future, but I'm going to go back to something that I've harped on for a long time, and that is that we have a tax cap that has hurt us significantly for almost 40 years, and it's continuing to hurt us. Eliminating it tomorrow, even if we're able to, wouldn't correct those problems. It would take a long time to correct those problems, but that is something that needs to happen. So I would hope that you, as a member of a neighborhood association, would recognize that and would help the city work towards that goal, but it's a long-term goal. I do want to congratulate the city staff for all the decorating of the facilities that has happened, and it brings tourists into the city. It's an attraction for the city for all these facilities, and they've done a fabulous job. And I do want to also commend the businesses that have done their holiday lighting. It really improves the appearance of the city. Again, one of the little things in the realm of attraction for the city, but it is significant, certainly for this season. I want to mention that on January 8th, the next council meeting, the Tokushima delegation presentation will be made, so I welcome anyone who's interested in seeing what that was all about to attend. I want to next mention, and many of you know that I'm involved with the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra. They had the Christmas concert last Tuesday. The highlight of it, in addition to the music, was the, on the big screen that is on the stage behind the orchestra, the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra had scenes from throughout Saginaw, both holiday lighting scenes, both, as well as winter scenes and combinations of those two, that highlighted all the facilities of your city. Everything from the zoo to other, to the waterworks, to downtown, to Old Town, wonderful scenes, and highlighted how beautiful your city is. I'm actually going to be talking to the manager. He doesn't know this yet, but I'm hoping we can present something from the symphony as a presentation that may highlight some of these pictures, because they were really tremendous. as a presentation that may highlight some of these pictures, because they were really tremendous. I want to mention the authorities, boards, and commission needs more volunteers for membership on them. There are several that could still use more members. We would hope that those of you out there who are listening, if you're not yet involved, that you would get involved in one of our board's authorities and commissions. Finally, I do want to also add my Happy Holidays to those that have been given already. Thank you, and that's all I have, so next.
Next item is a report from the manager.
Thank you, and we have a presentation this evening. Make a few comments first and then do that, and then make some more comments about the audit and some other issues. But I would say that the Public Services Department has done just about all they can with parks and recreation. They've gotten a lot of grants, which we've been able to use for the Celebration Park area. And mid-2000s, City Council, for a number of reasons, financial reasons, virtually eliminated most of the budget for parks and recreation. So it's incumbent upon neighborhood groups and other groups to work on the parks in their neighborhood, which so many groups have done. And just to mention a few, Friends of Hoyt Park have done a phenomenal job with the park. And the ice rink is out now, well, it's probably not frozen today after the temperatures we've had. But that one, and we see all the other groups that come. Dindorfer Woods has the Northmore Association, has done a lot of work on that parks with no dollars from the city. They had donations from Dow, I believe, Dow Corning and Consumers Energy to do that work. The Janet Nash, the new park, that was all primarily donations from Dow Corning and the nonprofit group Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy managing the work. So we work with these groups to get things in the parks done. And we also, Phil's area has worked with Trees for Tri-City to replace a lot of the trees as they go down. So I think it is something that we have worked on, but again, it takes that cooperation and working with public services to get those things in neighborhoods. So I think there's a place for everyone. And if that neighborhood that Mr. Oberschmidt was talking about has some issues at the park, maybe a good time to talk to Phil and try to get grants for that. We do have, he mentioned the River Walk. We do have a quote for that. Repairing that blacktop, and it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we did look at grants, and we're still trying to get funding for that, but that's an issue that we know is there, but it does take a lot of money, and we just don't have those funds available this time, so we look to private entities and grants. So with that, I'm going to ask Jamie Rivette with Yo and Yo to present the audit findings for fiscal year '17.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much for having me tonight. Tonight, I'm going to go over the highlights from the audit that we just did. It does go back to your fiscal year end of June 30th, 2017. So just keep that in mind as we go through. So first, I'll just start off by talking about really what an audit opinion is. It can only be issued by a licensed CPA firm, and the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle is management's responsibility, along with the design, the implementation, and the maintenance of the internal control. And then as your auditors, my team and I come in, and we audit that information that was provided to us and give you an opinion on it. And you are issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance offered, and it means that you are issued a clean opinion. And I also wanted to point out that the city did receive their award of Financial Reporting Achievement from the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, for your June 30th, 2016 financial statements. And this award is for excellence in financial reporting. So just wanted to make a mention of that and a great job to all of those involved in that process. So now we'll take a look at your general fund revenue and transfers. We have a pie chart up here, and I'll just kind of point out a couple of items here. You can see the blue section here is your income taxes. So out of all the revenue in your general fund, about 41% is coming from the city income tax. And then the next largest item is your intergovernmental. That makes up 25%, and the majority of that is your state shared revenue. We have property taxes and your grants and contributions both coming in at 11%, which equates to about 3.5 to 3.4 million. In your grants and contributions, that includes your federal grants, state grants, as well as the indirect costs. On the next slide, we have the general fund revenue and transfers that we've been charting since 2011. You can see in 2011, it was a bit higher. That was the year we had a lot of stabilization fund dollars that came through in the federal grants. But if we're looking at 2016 to 2017, we did have an increase in your total revenue of approximately $1 million over the last year. And in looking into what makes that up, we had about $400,000 that came in from a transfer from other funds, public safety and CDBG funds. We also had a capital lease for vehicles this year, so we have the proceeds which come in as revenue, but they also offset the exact same amount as expenditures. And then the largest area really was with the increase in the city income tax this year. And when we kind of delved into that, it's because there are higher wages and the employment in the city is up. And we looked at the top 10 employers, and they showed an increase of about $476,000 more in the current year for withholdings compared to the prior year. Now, still focusing on the general fund, we have your general fund expenditures and transfers, which totaled a little over 30.6 million. A few items to point out here, as you can see that green section really is the public safety, and I know that was kind of pointed out earlier. That's one of the legs of that stool that is very important when you're talking about the public safety. We have police and fire included in there. Police makes up about 11 million of the 18.8, with fire coming in at 7.8 million. So 62% of the total general fund expenditures are related to public safety. And then we have general government, that's 14%. That really includes quite a bit of line items there. We file the state chart of accounts on what to include in there, so that includes city council, city manager. And the largest piece is your retiree health insurance and contributions, which makes up about $2.3 million. And then we have general services. That's your street lighting, your cemetery's operations and maintenance, as well as building and grounds, and that makes up 10% of your total general fund expenditures. So same kind of slide that we had for your revenue, now we are showing your expenditures and transfers. And if you look at 2015, '16, and '17, it's almost exactly the same. So the city's done a really good job at maintaining your general fund expenditures. It's coming in about 30.7 million to 30.6 million for the current year. Now, we kind of took your revenue and expenditures and plotted them in the same chart, but just so you can look and see where they are. If we look at 2011, '12, and '13, we can see those were really three years of spending. The expenditures, which is the red line, exceeded the revenue that we had coming in for our general fund. Now, when we look at 2014, '15, '16, and '17, we were able to turn that around. So the city's doing a good job of maintaining their expenditures over the past four years and have been able to add back to your general fund fund balance. Now, with that being said, you do have an unassigned general fund balance of about 3.9 million. And I know this sounds like a large number, but when we break that down by number of days, the city spends on average about $83,000 a day. So if we look at the amount of your unassigned fund balance and equate in those expenditures per day, it really comes out to about a month and a half that you could operate on your unassigned fund balance without any revenue coming in. And in doing that calculation, it does put you at about 14%. So your unassigned fund balance, it puts you at about 14% of your total expenditures. And a couple of years ago, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, did recommend that cities have about a 15% to 20% unassigned fund balance. That's kind of their recommended, felt that that would be a healthy percentage to have. So now that I see you're working up toward that and you're getting there, so one thing the council might want to consider is having a fund balance policy. So what that does is council can decide if there's a certain percentage or a certain dollar amount that they would like to see stay in the general fund. And that's best practices to, you know, help keep the unassigned fund balance at a level that's acceptable year after year. Now, we'll take a peek at your proprietary funds. So we have your water and sewer fund here. And we have this for your balance sheet of your assets and liabilities. So your total assets for sewer are 79.6 million, with water about 102.5 million. Now, the majority of that really is your non-current assets, which are your capital assets, less the accumulated depreciation for those. And then moving on down the page, we do have your total liabilities for sewer is 45.6 million. And you can see you have that net pension liability. So a couple of years ago, I was up here talking to you about that. Large liability, we're going to have to post on there for the expected liability you're going to pay for pension. And then we have the other post-employment benefits too, for sewer and water. So when you get down to the end for your sewer fund, you do have a total net position for sewer of 30.4 million and for water of 39.1 million. And both of those did decrease compared to the last year. Now, in addition to auditing the financial statements, we are also required to gain an understanding of your internal controls. We always are looking at areas for management override, so we do a couple of special tests. This year, we did adjusting journal entry testing, as well as a purchasing test, where we have hazardly selected some expenditures for supplies and equipment and verified those to the receiving document to make sure that those purchases were a legitimate city address who's approving them and that they were approved prior to purchase. And we're happy to report on those, that we did not find any discrepancies. We did have two items that we classified as a material weakness, and really it was because of the dollar amount that is material. The first one for audit adjustments, this was the last year where they were transferring over your pension funds into MERS. And in doing so, it was a very unique, unusual situation, and the adjusting entry for that was material. And the other item is the fund reclassification. And during the year, we were looking into the Pension Trust Fund for GASB 74. And in doing so, we had to reclassify that fund into a different type of fund. And we are happy to report that we did not have any significant deficiencies. We had two items that we call management comments. So these are things that when we're out doing our audit, we're just looking for ways that we feel the city could improve their efficiency or an opportunity to strengthen internal controls. So we had two items. The first one was with OPEB census data, and that is included in the letter that you have. Talks about that we picked a sample, and there was one item that just didn't match up, so we just had noted that. And then there were two deficit fund balances, so two of your funds had a deficit. The one being the Community Development Fund, and that really is just timing of when the revenue is coming in. So your revenue that's deferred does offset that deficit, and there's nothing that you need to file additional with the state. There's no deficit elimination plan required. And the other one is the Anderson Center Operation Fund. This does have a deficit. However, there was a significant decrease in that deficit over last year, which is fantastic. The deficit was 86,000. At the end of June 30, 2017, it was down to 49,000. The city does have a deficit elimination plan filed with the state, and you are actually currently ahead of schedule, so that's a great job there. Now, in addition to the financial statements and understanding internal control, because the city does receive federal dollars and spends more than $750,000 in federal grants, the feds require us to do another audit, which is referred to as a single audit. And that really is all compliance-based, so it's a yes or no, check the box. There's no gray area. So we had two major programs we tested this year. The Community Development Block Grant, also referred to as CDBG, and also the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER grant. Those two totaled, covered 76% of your total federal expenditures. And we're happy to note that you did not have any findings for the current year, as well as we documented up here, you did not have any findings for the prior year either. And then my last slide I have is just some future challenges. We have the personal property taxes, we have fund balance. I know we are actually improving in the general fund, and we have the one deficit fund that's going out of deficit, so just wanted to, we are making progress there. We have the escalating healthcare costs. There was approximately 12.8 million in claims paid for the fiscal year. Increase in retirement costs, which is the legacy cost for your current and previous employees. Those actual contributions were almost 25 million in the current year. We do have a declining tax base for the property taxes. It did decrease about 3% in the current year. Last year was a decrease of 5%. And currently, there's no funding for infrastructure and replacement of old buildings, so there's not a specific revenue stream to help pay for those improvements in maintenance of the buildings. And then the last two items are the unfunded OPEB costs and then the unfunded pension obligations. So next year, there will be a new GASB, just like two years ago where we posted the pension liability. We're going to have to do the same for your other post-employment benefits. And that'll be for June 30, 2018. With that being said, I would just like to thank Tim Yolanda, Lori, and all their staff for their hard work in getting the audit and working on it and getting it through the process. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Any questions, Councilman Bowles?
The people who work for the water department, are they city employees? Well, the reason why I ask is because I'm wondering if, do the city, do the water funds pay for the unfunded liability for those people's pensions? Okay.
Yep, that's allocated out. So the actuary creates, does the calculation to tell us what the unfunded portion is. And then the city has documentation as to the legacy cost, previous and current employees, and then that liability gets allocated out based on a percentage to the appropriate fund.
So I would imagine that considering the fact they got extra funds in theirs, that theirs is up to date probably 100% or what?
No, they don't have a money liability that's there either. They're paying as they go as well. So they're in a similar boat. And all of that will be paid by user fees for the water systems. It's an enterprise fund. So not just the water, but we're paying OPEB and pension costs for departments that don't even exist anymore, from when we used to have our own rubbish department, rubbish collection. A big part of that fee for rubbish is paying those pension and retiree healthcare costs. It just so happens that the enterprise funds, we set the fees to pay for that level. So that's how it's funded. The general fund, OPEB and pension liability, all has to come from that other table that Jamie was showing, income tax, revenue sharing, et cetera, those other items in that pie.
Coming up. So that, 89 or 80, whatever it was, that was last year. And so this year, we're at 49. Okay. Okay, we ain't doing too bad.
You're ahead of your plans, so that's great news.
Councilman Humphreys?
Page nine, material weaknesses, the audit adjustments, and the fund reclassification. The impression I got is those were one-time things.
Yes, both of them were. The first one with the audit adjustments was moving a pension plan into MERS. It did have its own single employer plan for police and fire. If you recall, last year, we moved a portion of it over. And then this year, we had to get the rest of it over. It was a very unique, unusual circumstance this year. The fund reclassification, there was a new GASB. Governmental Accounting Standards Board has these specific rules, and a new one came out and was required to be adopted and implemented this year. And so in doing so, in looking at the specific requirements for what could be classified as a trust fund, it was as a trust fund, it was determined that one that was there now needed to be moved out. So both of them, very unique and unusual.
I have a feeling that you're bound by using certain language vocabulary, so to refer to it as a material weakness, that's because that's what you were supposed to do as a practical matter. It was known, addressed, and resolved very successfully, and so it's not something we need to be worried or concerned about, because everybody did what they were supposed to be doing.
Correct. It was an adjustment that when we came out to do the audit, wasn't completely done, and auditing that information determined this adjustment needed to be made. And the adjustment was a significant dollar amount, so... But given the circumstance of the issue and what it was, I have, in my career, never had to do that, so this is the first time.
It's part of what brought us to the unmodified or clean audit.
Well, it's unmodified and clean because the entry was posted. So, yes, if you didn't post the entry, then it would not have been unmodified or a clean audit.
All right.
Good question.
Thank you.
Your future challenges. We note escalating healthcare costs. Since this is an audit for last year, we don't have an opinion in hand yet then about the effect of some recent changes to the OPEB in that area. That'll occur with next year, correct?
Correct. Yep, this is from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017.
Right.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie, and I think, thanks to everyone who helps put all the numbers together for you and you to audit. Most departments do have items to turn in, especially human resources and fiscal services and management and budget and the clerk's office, and technical services also, it's quite a bit in pulling a lot of that data. So thanks to everyone for getting that done and getting it submitted to the state and the feds by December 18th and presented to council is very good, in my opinion. So got a while. Even in past years, it's been a little bit later, but we've always done it before it's due, but as I mentioned at the last meeting, when at times it was done six months and seven months late in 2005 or '06, this is a much more preferable route to go. And additionally, I'll mention, I think when I started in 2009, we had about three or four pages of material weaknesses and deficiencies, so to have just two comments on there is good as well. Those have all been cleaned up over the last nine years, so we're happy about that. And the two things, I know on the presentation, it showed escalating costs, but I just want to take a second and talk about where we are with our fund balance. As Jamie mentioned, we're close to 14% with our unassigned. It's a little bit higher of a fund balance with our assigned, but we've come a long way to it. In 2013, we had about $270,000 in fund balance. So we're now close to $4 million, but we are still a little bit below the recommended minimum. So 15% is the goal that I always set as a minimum, but 15% to 20% as GFOA recommended is the preferable amount. I really think it would benefit us to have council set a policy regarding fund balance and the desirable level and the minimum level, so that we have those guidelines in the city in the future going forward. And that's something that helps council and the public, because then you'll really be notified when dollars have to be taken from that fund balance to pay for expenditures in the general fund, and you'll know the status of that. So I think that's something that we should look at through the next budget process, and Ms. Jones is already working on that with her staff. The item that is very concerning, and we know about it, and we've talked about it before in Jamie's bullet points for future, is OPEB and pension liability. Councilman Millen mentioned escalating healthcare costs. Well, we've been able to grow that fund balance by a number of actions by a lot of department heads and city administration. The work that Dennis Jordan did with retiree healthcare was phenomenal for us, and that change is going to help us. Mr. Carwatt's area had the street light changeover from high-pressure sodium to LED lights. We've done reorganization where we combined GIS and IAS and saved several hundred thousand dollars there. We outsourced City Attorney's Office, that saved us a couple hundred thousand dollars, which it builds upon itself every year. That's an annual savings. The Controller's Office is somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 in savings a year. So a lot of areas have taken steps to decrease costs which go into building up that fund balance. However, we have that huge item out there with OPEB and pension liability. So lest people think we have a lot of extra dollars to allocate to any area, parks, recreation, public safety, those are benefits that have to be paid. So one way or another, they're going to be paid by the city of Saginaw, and it's nothing that we've... I think in the last probably 16 or 17 years, the city's done mostly steps to reduce those costs in the future. However, promises were made and those things need to be paid for. OPEB liability as of June 30, 2017 is $270 million, and currently, we do not have an OPEB trust fund, so technically, we have $0 set aside to fund that. That was our primary motivation for working with the retiree healthcare, is to start setting dollars aside for that OPEB cost, so that we don't lay employees off in the future to pay for those costs. So it's not something that, you know, now we can repair all these slides or other items because we're saving some money on retiree healthcare. Those dollars are going to have to be paid in the future, so it's incumbent upon us to do that planning and not just think we do have a lot of extra money there. The net position for the pension at the end of '17 was 172.8 million. It's 52% funded. That leaves an unfunded pension liability of 161 million. That's, with those two outstanding liabilities, that's a significant amount of money. Which brings me to the meeting I had with Senator Horn regarding the OPEB legislation that went out. I think Senator Horn was very gracious to meet with me and the MML, and actually invited me there because he wanted to know what Saginaw has done, because a lot of the people that pushed this legislation mentioned Saginaw as having significant issues because they see these liabilities. So I was glad to be able to tell him the steps that we've taken and some recommendations that I would have liked to have seen in the legislation, but, and Senator Horn had a lot of good ideas too, but that's not... Some of the ideas that he had that I thought were very positive were not added to the legislation. It really wasn't his central focus, and he didn't get, I don't think, as much input as we'd all like there. So the legislation that passed, I believe that, in reading it, and everything's not finalized yet, but I believe that they're going to say that we're underfunded in both pension and our healthcare. Reading the bill, accrued liability of retirement healthcare system is less than 40% funded, and if the annual required contribution is greater than 12% of the general fund revenues, you're going to be declared underfunded. And we're obviously, we don't have a trust fund, we don't have that money directly allocated, so we, I think, will fit that guideline. Pension systems, less than 60% funded with an ARC over 10% of your general fund. I think we fit both of those, because we are under 60%, funded, and we do have significant pension allocations that we're making annually. So if you meet those two, if you fall in those two categories, you'll have to file reports annually to Treasury detailing the funding status and submit a correction active action plan demonstrating that the underfunded status is being addressed, and Treasury must approve the plan. So I think it's likely that they're going to want to see some of those dollars that we're saving being set aside. It could be the establishment of a pension or OPEB trust fund or some other things, and we'll have to wait and see when we get a little bit more. We'll probably have to work with our auditors and Controller and Budget Office and Fiscal Services to put that plan together, but that's something that we'll have to submit to Treasury annually, and they'll have to approve it. They do, they will monitor to make sure you're taking the steps that you say. I believe the bill says, within 180 days, you have to start taking the steps that you said you were going to take, so they will be monitoring that. But again, that's nothing new. I don't think, and I think council's aware of it, and I don't think anyone needed to tell us that that's an issue. We've talked about it several times, so we knew it. We didn't need the state to point that out, but we will be doing a little more extra work because of that bill. I also mentioned that we do have Ms. Lori Brown and Ms. Jones and I are meeting with Treasury tomorrow in Lansing with the Local Unit Division to talk about some of the ways that they interact with local governments and some of the steps that Saginaw has taken and the challenges we've had in the last several years. So I think that's a positive. They usually aren't, haven't been real open and talked to local units, they just go about their business. So we're glad to participate in that. We were invited by Dr. Scorsone, who is a Saginaw native, his dad was a judge in Saginaw County, and he is serving as the Director of the Local Unit Division in Treasury right now. So hopefully, we can give them some positives of the city and maybe get some more information on how these corrective action plans will work as well. Finally, I'll mention that we do have our agenda for the strategic planning session, and the topics that we have, one from council is Tax 101, so we're working on that, and I'll be talking to Ms. Brown and Jones about that presentation and discussion. I've had some discussions with Councilmen Humphries and Mayor Pro Tem Clark about what they'd like to see in that, so we're putting that together. We'll have some talk about the tax cap with that discussion as well. We'll have an update on redevelopment-ready communities, and I think we have someone from MEDC coming to talk to council about that. And also, an update on form-based zoning, which is an offshoot of that redevelopment-ready, but looking forward to seeing that come to council soon, so that you can approve those rules. So that'll be a good update. We also have a DDA update. They're doing a market study, which I think is significant, because we do want to attract more businesses to the DDA district, but we need to be able to show what, show the data that says we need this type of business in the DDA district, and there's a market for it. So the DDA has taken that study on, so we'll have a presentation about that. And finally, we'll be talking about planning for the future, not fiscally, but more of a community planning. What type of vehicles will there be? What do you want the roads to look like? There's been some significant studies on what a future city should look like for parking, traveling, and economic development. So that is the final area that we'll have during the strategic planning session. And also, I have a reminder here for the NAG meeting tomorrow at noon in council chambers. That concludes the management update.
Madam Clerk.
This item is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. We've room for exceptions. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any exceptions to the consent agenda? Any exceptions? Hearing none, we would ask for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any reports of city boards and commissions? Any council members, any reports? Hearing none, and then, Madam Clerk.
Our next item is resolutions, and we do have two on the agenda tonight. First being approve the transfer of obsolete property rehabilitation certificate for 107 South Washington Avenue.
Is there support? Seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, Madam Clerk.
Our second is eliminate the deficit fund balance in the Anderson Enrichment Center Operations Fund.
Is there a motion to approve, to adopt? Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All right.
Is this what Jamie was talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
The ones we're way ahead on.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure now. We're taking no money.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, again, Madam Clerk.
Motions and miscellaneous business.
Are there, is there any other business to bring before the council? Anybody? Need a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Thank you.